All right, good evening, everyone. You know what time it is. Technical difficulty time. But I think we're, I think we're good. And we're going to call the meeting to order. The Malden School Committee today is Monday, November 10th, 2025. Now, our next meeting will take place on Monday, December 8th, here in the chamber. Originally, it was December 1st. But please update your calendars to reflect that it will be December 8th. Now, before anyone thinks there's a conspiracy on us moving the date, it was because of November's meeting being tonight and the next meeting being so close that we wanted to make sure there was sufficient space in between our meetings. So again, the next meeting will be Monday, December 8th at 6:00 PM here in the chamber. So, tonight, we'll first pledge allegiance to our flag as we always do. Then, we're going to have a moment of silence for our veterans, especially where tomorrow is Veterans Day. And there also will be an additional moment of silence led by our student representative, who will talk about, unfortunately, what transpired this week at Malden High School. From there, we'll take attendance to ensure that we have a quorum sufficient to allow us to come together. And then, we'll get into the agenda for tonight. Now, the agenda consists of the following. First up, we'll take a look at the minutes from our last meeting in October. We'll then see if there were any questions regarding the warrants from October. Then, we're going to turn it over to you, the public. For those wishing to address us, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. And the time limit on public comment per speaker is three minutes. We're going to hope for 15 minutes tonight, and then we'll adjust if necessary. From there, we're going to hear from our school superintendent. There are two specific items underneath the report. One is around Nature's Classroom. And then, the other one is about the goals of our school superintendent. After that, we'll go to subcommittee reports and discussions. There were three items there. First up, Ms. Hordy will talk about how things are going with the short collaborative. Then, we'll go to Ms. Batafora on budget. And then, finally, Ms. Rose Seiberg on policy and procedure. From there, motions or resolutions. So, we have three items there. One is, we received a $500 donation to the Core Lots Program. The second item will be a request of Ms. Batafora for a audit of special education services. And then, after that, we're going to go to Ms. Rose Seiberg to talk about a draft policy regarding IHAIA, in parentheses, "Middle School Pathway Exploration." Now, from there, everyone, we'll do what we typically do. We'll hear from all the members as to what's going on in their respective wards. Then, after that, we're going to entertain a motion to go into executive session. Pending the outcome of that motion, we would go into that session for the approval of the October 6th minutes. Then, we're going to discuss strategy with respect to collector bargaining as it pertains to SEIU Local 888, which are commonly known as cafeteria workers. And then, from there, we're going to also discuss strategy in preparation for contract negotiations with our non-union personnel, specifically our superintendent of schools. Then, we will come back out here. And we may act on what occurred in executive session, or we may not, depending on how it goes. But either way, we'll move adjournment. And then, again, we'll come back here on Monday, December 8th. So, are there any questions of the members? If not, let's pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this point, we ask everyone to please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of all those who have fought for our country and continue to do so throughout the world today. Thank you. And I think appropriate at this moment, we would like to extend an invitation to the committee and all of you as we'll be hosting a ceremony tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM at Forestale Cemetery. Now, I asked all of you to please remain standing as I would like to now go to our student representative for an additional moment of silence. Let me see, once, can you turn that, one second? We may have good news, depending on how you look at it. You may only hear from me tonight. So, we're trying to fix these microphones. All right, everyone. So, while we try to fix these microphones, let's see if we can take care of some of the items on the agenda. October 6th, regular session minutes. So, motion by Mr. Bernard, seconded by Ms. Rose Seiberg. Any questions on those? Everybody good? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, the ayes have it, that carries unanimously. Now, these warrants, any questions about those? You've had a chance to review them. What do we typically do here? Motion to place on file? Motion by Mr. Bernard, seconded by Ms. Hordy. So, no further questions? All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, those are placed on file. All right, everybody, the follies continue. So, the rules are, when there is a member coming to us remotely, we're supposed to take all our votes via roll call, according to state guidelines. So, Mr. Gray, who represents Ward 6, is with us online tonight. So, I think we need to go back, because you never know. We need to do it the right way. So, we have the motion, we have the motion by, for the minutes. You have the second. Let's call the roll on those, please. Oh, we didn't do that either? So, let's do that, too. Please. Yeah, just, just below.
May I question some?
Here.
Mr. Drummy?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Batafora?
Here.
Ms. Mathlin?
Here.
Ms. Hordy?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Mr. Gray? I think you're on mute, Mr. Gray. He's here. We have a quorum sufficient to allow us come together legally. Let's do those minutes. You had the motion, you had the second, let's call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Yes, so those carry unanimously. Next up, with a warrant, you have the motion and the second, let's call it.
Mr. Drummy? Mr. McCarthy? Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Mathlin? Ms. Hordy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yeah, he, I think he did. Yep.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Seiberg?
Yes.
May I question some?
Yes. All right, those carry unanimously. All right, everyone, now, let's go to public comment. This is your chance. Although, the way things are going tonight, you may not want to, to address the school committee. So, please, just come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we'll give you three minutes. So, public comment is now open. Anybody wishing to step up? No, just go voice, a cappella, okay? But let me just turn on, tell me when you're ready. All right, I'm going to start at three, two, one.
Okay. Good evening. Penny Galton, 1194 Bay Ridge Street, all of them. I just wanted to say that words have power. Whether you are a key word crusader hiding behind a screen, someone young or old speaking to an audience, those elected to office or just hold leadership positions, words have power.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now? Please. Good evening. Let me just count you down, three, two, one. Here we go.
Hi, my name is Rashna Irani, 119 Bay Ridge Street.
Good to see you.
Thank you. I am here tonight to talk up about my concerns about tech in schools. I have three children in Forestale, kindergarten, third grade, fifth grade. Fifth grade, this is the first year where my child is able to bring his Chromebook home and is doing a fair amount of work on the Chromebook during school. I am here to ask if we can consider having less Chromebook time, less computer time in general. I think it's really important that, for example, vocabulary is on, on the Chromebook. My child is cutting and pasting words. He's not learned, like, his spelling is stagnating, penmanship stagnating. Also, they, the kids are going to school cafeteria in the morning and playing video games instead of doing non-computer activities. After they're done with their problem set or test, they, they're allowed to go on their Chromebooks and play video games. You know, kids are very smart. And my child was just telling me yesterday, there's a video game that's banned, but they, all the kids know how to search every website to see if they can hack it across the one that, that will allow them into this banned video game. So, I, my home is screen-free, and I am just concerned about the amount of computer exposure that children are getting, I will stop there.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wishing to address the school committee? Please, welcome. Let me just stop and reset. Okay, ready to go? Okay, take it away.
Okay. Doctor Lynn Thomas, 131 Grace Street. So, dear school committee members, Mayor Christensen, Hubert Tannen Sippel, I'm here tonight to share the concerns of seventh grade students and families at the BB regarding the implementation of Course Mojo. For the less initiated, Course Mojo is a generative AI tool that uses students on their content and claims to personalize and differentiate support to students. But according to their website, it counts interactivity as a major benefit of adopting this tool. However, that is not what students experience. Their takeaways are aligned with the numerous drawbacks known of Gen AI, which I will highlight. The first is student-teacher relationships and interactions. As every report last month, there were big downsides to using Gen AI that can't be ignored. Students' ability to develop meaningful relationship with teachers are hindered. With an over-reliance on AI tools for feedback or assistance with text-based responses, it can lead to a reduction in face-to-face communication and connection between students and teachers. Over time, this results in less human interaction and a lack of empathy. Interpersonal skills and emotional intelligence can diminish too, leading to social isolation and anxiety. AI cannot take the place of a human teacher offering support, which is crucial for student well-being. Students told me over and over that I would prefer to learn with the teachers than Mojo. The next one is cognitive and skill development, which I'll highlight and later to do later on. And then, also productive struggle, right? Rather than students benefiting from productive struggle with multilingual resources, opportunities to work with peers, and fostering resilience to promote deeper understanding. Many families reported to me that Mojo is telling them, you're on the right track, which causes frustration. At this point, students consider Mojo, in quotes, senseless and a waste of time. One moment, it may ask a child, please provide a passage drawn from the text to support your answer. And then, suddenly, it says, it looks like you took the text directly from the passage to support your answer. Try putting it in your own words. It does this back and forth a few times before letting them advance. It seems to be a second of, students benefit much more from interacting than packing texts together. There's more about equity concerns from marginalized groups and how lower intermediate language learners aren't going to understand and effectively apply the feedback that's given, especially when it lacks cultural or linguistic adaptation. In my other.
Just about, you got 10 seconds.
Okay, so, in full transparency, I thought I would come here to offer a way to correct course with piloting of Course Mojo, that if the district could use assessment data to target a subset of seventh graders working towards grade-level writing abilities, perhaps the group would benefit from more frequent targeting feedback. However, after examining the drawbacks a bit closer, I find the problematic nature of Course Mojo not recommended for anyone. So, in closing, I strongly suggest the implementation of Course Mojo be paused and families given a clear way to opt out. Some families have negotiated this directly with their teacher, but it takes time and capital, families may not have.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now? All right, we're going to close public comment. And now, we're going to go to our school superintendent. Maybe.
Good evening. Yeah, you could use this one, so, oh, there we go. Good evening. So, the first, the first item for my report tonight, I'm delighted to share, is that we have out-of-state overnight field trips that are being proposed for school committee approval through Nature's Classroom. And I believe, for the first time, we have all five schools, all five of our K-8 schools participating. And we have representatives from all five schools here tonight to answer questions. But I'm going to invite Assistant Superintendent Bassin, just to come up briefly, say a couple of words, and also invite a couple of our students who are here in the audience as well.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alex of, 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 of seventh grade school.
Welcome.
And today, I'm trying to tell you about the four-day, three-night Nature's Classroom, Nature's Classroom future.
Okay.
Good evening, students. Please consider that the sixth grader graders of 2025 attending the Nature's Classroom for the 39th ninth year. This, this year, for reasons such as having a fun experience, being well-fed, and most importantly, to me, overcoming fears. First, I had a really fun time at Nature's Classroom. First of all, when we arrived, all the teachers were very nice, especially my field group leader, Poncho. They were very funny and kind to us at all times. I was, even though every day we had to get up at 7:00 AM, and we even went on a seven-mile hike. Our half-hour chances. Experience for several reasons. We had a very nice seating chart. We also had amazing food choices. Some of these.
We also got to sit with new peers and teachers. This was a fun and good experience. Last of all, and most importantly, overcoming fears. First, staying away from home had me really nervous. I was anxious about who I would be rooming with, but Ms. Precourt told me she had me, so that made me feel a little better. Once I got to camp and saw the people I was dorming with, I felt more comfortable. As the days went on, that nervousness slowly washed away as I did more activities with friends and my new teacher. The fear completely went away. Secondly, I was scared to stay away from my phone, because I'm always on my phone, with my phone. Then, by the second day, I felt like I didn't need my phone, because we were doing so many fun activities all day. I honestly needed a break from tech and my phone. And it sent a wave of relief over my mind, being away from people, and the bullying went away. In conclusion, camp was super fun and nothing like I thought it would be. I think it would be very kind and meaningful if these, this year's sixth graders and future sixth graders could go to Nature's Classroom and have just a good, just as good, if not even better, experience than I did.
Well said, well said. Before you leave the microphone, what was your favorite activity?
My favorite activity? It was probably when we went to the woods and this outdoors playground. And there was a zip line that me and the other people in my field group, we would swing across, and it was like the floor is lava, and if you touched the ground, you would lose.
Maybe, maybe I shouldn't have asked you that. I could never handle the zip line. Good for you. All right, welcome. What's your name?
Jennifer Exelon.
Good to see you again.
Good evening, school committee. The sixth grade trip to Nature's Classroom was one of the best experiences we had, not just because it was fun, but because we learned so much in ways we could never learn in a classroom. We think the future sixth graders should have the same opportunity, and here's why. First, Nature's Classroom makes learning fun and exciting. Instead of reading about nature in textbooks, we saw it up close and studied plants, animals, and habitats in real life. And we learn how to, how everything in nature is connected. For an example, we made fires from scratch, explored the forest, and even learned survival skills. These lessons helped us understand nature in ways that stick with us more than worksheets ever could. And because of that trip, I learned to go outside more instead of letting my phone consume my life. Second, Nature's Classroom taught us teamwork and independence. We had to work together to complete challenges, clean up after ourselves, and learned about compost and trash. It showed us to be respectful, responsible, and supportive of one another through skills that were just as important as academics. We also had fun with night singing, hiking, and talking with friends. Many of us became close friends with people we barely talked to before this trip and gained appreciation for people we didn't know very well. Finally, the trip helped us connect with nature. In a fool, in a world full of screens, noise, drama, bullying, spending a few days outdoors reminded us how beautiful nature can be and how we shouldn't be stuck on our devices. It taught us to take care of our environment and to think about our actions and how it affects it. It also taught us to take care of ourselves and face hard challenges. At first, many of us were scared and nervous to go on this trip, but by the end, we all felt upset that we had to leave and wished we could stay longer. In conclusion, Nature's Classroom wasn't just a field trip. It was a valuable experience that combined education, teamwork, and personal growth. It made us better sixth grade students and better people to the environment. We strongly believe that every future sixth grader class deserved the same chance to grow and learn the same way they did. Thank you for considering our request, sincerely, Jennifer Exelon.
Well done, well done. Are you, are you of the city-famous Exelon Home family?
Oh, yeah.
Say hi to everyone for us, okay? And same for you, what was your favorite? Was it zip line?
It was probably the tire swings. There's this obstacle I had to do, um, like, we had to get across the tires. And like, and like, I fell a bunch of times. And also, like, like he said, the zip line, because it was really funny, the way he kept falling off. And like, he took, and every single time he fell off, we had to restart. So, like, everybody was getting mad at him, and it was really funny. So, yeah.
All right, got it. All right, well, I don't even know if we need the assistant superintendent after that. How do you want to proceed? Do you want to?
Just a, just a brief overview of the.
And before we do, just let me see, any of the members have questions, or? Okay, take it away, assistant sup.
Thank you. And I just want to shout out our students, so I think.
Yes, very good.
I'll be very brief. You have in front of you a memo that describes the logistics that we've looked into to provide this opportunity for schools at all five of our K-8 buildings. We're really excited about this year. It speaks to, you know, securing chaperones, making sure they're screened, making sure that, you know, health and medical considerations are taken care of and that students who need financial assistance are able to receive it. So, that, we are hopeful for your approval for this overnight and for some schools. So that, uh, we are hopeful for your approval for this overnight and for some schools out of state trip, but happy to answer any questions that you have.
Very good. What say you? Let's go to Ms. Macklin, and then after her will be Ms. Hordy.
Hi, good evening, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just had a question, if you can clarify the dates, because Salemwood says four days, three nights. And, um, BB and Lyndon, um, those appear to be two nights. So are they varying overnight dates? Because everything seems to be priced the same or similarly.
Yes, I believe each school, depending on, I think one of our teachers might be able to speak to this, who's some of our more experienced chaperones. Each school, um, depending on the destination and the dates, I think that the camps do vary in length.
Great.
Hi, I'm Mrs. McCarthy, formerly Ms. Precourt, the thing my student spoke about. Salemwood stays within the state and goes to Charlton, Mass.
Okay.
Some of the other schools are going out of state, so that's going to raise the cost. As well as, I mean, for us, and I will let you guys say as well, we have projected the cost for a little lower because we're going to be doing fundraising and we are going to cut some of the cost from our funds off the top. But yes, we're going for four and, but others are going for smaller. You can choose how long you're going, but they're going out of state, we're staying in state, so that's part of it.
Hi, I'm Kelly Swanson from the Fairway. We are going out of state, we go to, we go up to New Hampshire, and we're going with Forestale, the same dates. That just so happened last year that our trips aligned and we thought it was fabulous to have two different schools from Alden be there at the same time, so we chose to do that again. The cost varies on the location as well as the time that you're there. And I believe that the BB and the Lyndon, because this is their first time going, they wanted to start slow and just do the two nights. In the past, we've done four nights, five days in the past, but since we've come back from COVID, we started slow again. So again, depending on the location, depending on the time of year, depending on how many students you have, the cost does vary slightly. And again, depending on the school, um, what your school does for fundraising as well. So we are pretty heavy loaded on our fundraising as well. So we've, so that's where the varying costs come from.
I forgot about the time of year part two.
It is, a time of year is a big difference. So, um, you know, if we had gone two weeks prior to when we're going, like mid-May, it's like a hundred and fifty dollars more a kid.
Yep.
So, you know, you, you kind of stay out of that. I'd say that prime time is like April to the mid-May. So if you go later or earlier, it does cut down on the cost a little bit.
Thanks, thanks for the clarification.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Macklin. Over to Ms. Hordy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a couple of questions about the student. I know these are obviously like rough idea because I know that they're, that we don't know yet. But, um, so fifteen students have agreed to go at Lyndon right now. Is that in flux? Will that change? Does anyone know? Is anyone from Lyndon? I just didn't know if there was a deadline and like only fifteen children were going now, or if you have fifteen signed up and you're hoping to get more.
As of last week, we had fifteen signed up, I think.
Okay. Okay. And I know it's your first time back at this in a long time, so I imagine there's a little bit more hesitancy for people being less familiar with it.
It's new to our students, either hearing from other students in the district. And I think they're being persuaded by their, their friends in other schools.
Good, good. And sort of same question about BB and Fairway, it says pending. I imagine that means that, uh, the, the reason that I ask is because I know there are some like very firm deadlines about what, you know, every student needs to go, needs, we need to know by December first, or you can't go, like, when is that moment?
I think it's December fifteenth.
Okay. And I imagine it might be different in other places, but I, I just wanted to know how much this might change between now and then. But there's plenty of time for it to change, is what we're saying.
Plenty of time. So we have our, our deadline of saying that you want to go by before Christmas break, the first, the last Friday before Christmas break. But that's a rolling, like if parents finally, if we work our magic and parents say, yes, you can go, right? Or they do the fundraising or something happens that we can make it go, um, yeah.
And then also, we are not going until June, so.
Yes.
We haven't till like, I think I basically, they need to tell me by April vacation. But we did have a child last year that changed last minute, you know, like a couple of weeks before, so.
So there is flexibility within that?
Hard deadlines, so to speak.
I, because I just, I imagine someone being interested, I know, because I've been to some of the events that they have at Forestale, they're very exciting and all the students are involved and they do a lot of fundraising. And I imagine there are some students that get really into the fundraising before they even decide they're going sometimes.
And just to speak to your last question, we've been going for twenty six years off and on. But when we came back after COVID, my first year, I had thirty nine students, and then I had fifty, and last year I had seventy two. So I think it becomes with, as people start to get, it comes back in. And where Lyndon is, as I said, it's their first year, it's, those numbers will continue to rise.
Excellent, thank you so much, and thank you for taking the kids, all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Hordy. Seeing no other lights? Motion by Mr. Drummy, seconded by Mr. Bernard.
Question?
Yeah.
Are we taking?
I'm going to stand by. Yep.
I got it. Sorry, I'm on technical difficulties over here, so I'm just catching up with everybody. Are we taking these all up together or separately?
Yeah, I was thinking together unless someone objects. Any objections? If you could, Jen.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Hordy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yeah, he said yes.
Mr. Bernard? Mr. Rose Eibert?
Yes.
Mayor Christiansen?
Yes. All right, that carries you in, we're safe. Maybe we adjourn the meeting right now.
Say thank you to the teacher.
All right, um, let's go now to the superintendent's goals. Want to thank all of our educators and our students and their parents. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, I'm turning to the next item, and oh, well, we have slides.
I'm working over here, I'm working.
Are we able to? Okay. Don't quite fit on the screen, but that's, we're going to make it work. Well, good evening again, members of the committee, Mr. Chair, Ms. Vice Chair, members of the public. The, uh, this is the meeting in which I'm presenting our, the goals for, for myself as a part of the evaluation cycle with the committee. And as always, I just want to remind everyone that we have three core values that guide our work together, to include and collaborate, meaning that we want to involve people and decisions that impact them, that we embrace growth. We're constantly looking at each other as human beings who have the potential to, to do more than we can do today. And that's especially important for our students, but also for our educators and for our school communities. And then lastly, that everything we do, we want to make sure that in every way possible, we're doing right by all kids and, um, and not only some. We are going, if you, go one more. One more. And one more. Great. So this is just the evaluation cycle that the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education lays out for superintendent evaluation to ensure systems and alignment coherence, empower principals and other district administrators, and lead with a commitment to equity. And specifically tonight, we're going to be talking about goal setting. Our goals for, um, your goals, my goals for this year, and to get your feedback on those goals. If you can go one more. There are four standards on the superintendent rubric, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional growth. And, uh, as you'll see, the goals as we walk through, there are, each of them is aligned with these, with these standards, with one or more of these standards. Next. The, um, the state requires me to present to you, uh, a minimum of four goals. One goal for student learning, another goal for my professional practice, and then two, at least two goals for district improvement. The four goals at a glance, I just want to share with you tonight, first is the development of a five-year strategic plan. Second is to implement our district strategy for improvement, which we've done a lot of talking about already, but we'll, um, we'll speak to again tonight. The third goal is a special education program review, which I'll speak about more in a moment. And then finally, the second year of the new superintendent induction program, which I'm participating in through DESI and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. So the first goal I want to dive into in more detail is the development of a five-year strategic plan. Specifically, by June of next year, we will establish a strategic plan that will guide our work as a district through the twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one school year. It's amazing, but think about twenty thirty-one. It's long, feels like it's a long way away, but it's almost tomorrow. And that that plan will include input from key stakeholder groups and that this will encompass high priority goals, metrics to monitor implementation and progress, and key strategies and actions that will be taken to accomplish these goals. If you could go to the next slide, please. You'll remember last June, I brought, brought to you the findings that were the result of all of the entry work that we did last year. All of the listening sessions, the surveys, the, all of the work that we did in terms of town hall meetings, meetings, focus groups with students, and a very, very careful review of our student data to come up with those entry findings. And you'll see at the bottom of the screen, a list of many collect, areas for collective action that we identified through that work, as well as areas that were, that came up again and again as needing attention for our longer term planning. So, high expectations for all, fair access to opportunity, meeting diverse needs, nurturing a strong workforce. Those were all areas of collective, uh, collective action. And then there were other areas as far as high school and post-secondary success, digital literacy, expanding access to performing arts, um, meeting the needs of our advanced learners and preschool and early learning. Those were all examples of, um, areas that were more longer term, that were, uh, that were also very important to stakeholders over the course of, of last year. So the idea is over the course of this year, that first of all, in January, I'll be presenting to you an outline of a strategic plan. And I want, just want to make clear that this is not coming out of thin air, that it's really informed by all of the work that we did together to identify the needs of the district last year. But there will be opportunities both for stakeholders to be of input into the, into the, the, the plan as we move forward, and a lot of work with our principals and other staff to really put, um, details in terms of the strategies we're pursuing and the action steps we'll be taking to accomplish them. We'll be looking at data, and very importantly, um, especially in, in the, the year that we're in, we'll be looking at how to do these things in a financially sustainable way to make sure that we can actually do them. So that's the strategic plan. The next is to implement our district strategy for improvement, which is our student learning goal. And that's to specifically implement our strategy for improvement in literacy, math, and science, involving school-based cycles of observation, calibration, data analysis, and action planning, using our professional development structures and lesson study, and also the implementation of more formative teacher coaching, making sure that our teachers are not being asked to work in silos and isolation, but they're really getting the feedback that they need to become better at what they do. And that the people doing that coaching would include the principal, our assistant principals, our teacher leaders and coaches. And that this work is different from the evaluation work that has typically been done on a more traditional basis, which is still required by state law, but this is more, more, more useful to them in many ways. So on the next slide, just again, you'll remember many months ago, we looked at our two thousand twenty-four accountability data. Uh, I shared with you a look for tool that all of our administrators collaborated in developing to help us have a common definition of what effective instruction is. We developed a district priority using data from looking at what was happening in classrooms and looking at our mid-year data last year. And all of that fed into the superintendent's entry findings that informed also our work and our, um, for the school improvement plans that you all approved last June. So implementing this, and I want to say that it's really, we, a part of this in the goals that I presented to you in more detail is to identify specific metrics that will inform our work over time and monitor whether it's working. And we also want to, looking ahead to next year, make sure that we have adequate coaching for literacy and math and science. And that mid-year data that we're collecting over the course of this year will inform how we make those adjustments. Okay, next is special education program review. As you can see, we have several groups that the, that the state pays special attention to. Our English learners, students whose first language is not English, students with disabilities, low-income students, students with high needs. And you'll see that our students with disabilities for last year comprised eighteen, almost nineteen percent of our students, relative to twenty percent of the state. And we, we are doing a lot to, through our district priorities to impact the learning of students with disabilities and our English learners as well. However, um, last week, I had a meeting with all of the K eight principals and our preschool, early learning center principal. And what came from that is just the fact that our student population in our special education programs has shifted significantly from what it was a few years ago. And this is especially visible at the early ages. And that change of enrollment, that change the profile of the students that we have is something that we really need to be thoughtful in making sure that our programs are meeting their needs. Another issue is that, um, the state identifies several different criteria for all districts to meet the needs of their students with disabilities. And, um, there are several areas in which we want to do better and we need to do better. And I believe that this, this population in particular, with as many, um, structures and programs that are designed to help these students, we want to make sure that these programs are in fact delivering on what they're supposed to accomplish for them. So, on the next slide, you'll see, um, of this, on this, this little path, if you will, at the top, that represents all of the areas that our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education looks at for our, the achievement, the performance of our students, our compliance with special education laws and other considerations. Generally speaking, from the reports that we've received from the state for compliance, we have a lot of things that are in very, very good shape. Not perfect, but they're in very good shape. But in performance for our, both in literacy and math, and those are the two areas that they look at at the state, and well, as well as our graduation rate and the other metrics that the state pays attention to, we have a lot of work to do. And so that, in addition to the entry findings that also surface these needs, the data that we received from DESI just last month, um, these are all things that we're going to be looking at together. And again, engaging stakeholders, talking with our parents and caregivers, talking with our special education parent advisory council, and our administrators and our educators to really make sure that we are doing the right by all of them. And two things with this, that any adjustments that we can make for next year, that we can do so in a timely way and in a way that also meets. that we can do so in a timely way and in a way that also meets our budget. And then also that the longer-term, uh, adjustments, the longer-term shifts that we need to consider as a part of our special education program can be included in our strategic plan over the next several years. So that's number three. And then last, as I mentioned earlier, uh, I've been, uh, participating, uh, last year in the new superintendent induction program. I'm a, I'm a member of a cohort of, uh, superintendents who began their, um, their ten years last year. Now they're in their second year. We are in our second year. Um, and there are certain assignments and benchmarks that I'm responsible for, uh, meeting as a part of that program, working with, you can go to the next slide, sorry. Uh, working with our, um, a veteran superintendent as a coach, and then also going through, uh, specific content designed to help all of us become better leaders. Incidentally, a lot of the content for this second year relates to the development of a strategic plan. And so, um, the, the, the idea here is that I would engage in that process along with all the other year-two superintendents, and that, um, I would get solid marks on all of the work that I turn in, um, to the, um, to the program. And I think with that, I would really love to get feedback from the committee.
Very good, thank you. Questions from the team? Any questions? We're going to start with Ms. Hordy.
Thank you, Mayor Christensen. Dr. Sipple, you were discussing the student learning goal, um, on page twelve.
Yes.
And you had mentioned that we were going to be collecting mid-year data for ELA, math, and science. Can you talk a little bit more about that, please?
So, we, you know, we have, uh, for the K eights, pretty established, um, well, that we have established assessment systems for literacy and for math. We are, um, and specifically, uh, I Ready as well as IXL for math.
And can I ask a question about that? Are they done at data points in the beginning of the year, mid-year, end of the year?
Yes.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay. However, um, something that we are very curious about is whether those assessments are the best assessments, um, in that they are not, um, always aligned with the curriculum we're actually teaching. And so those assessments, they're typically adaptive assessments that may, you know, give you a sense of where they are in terms of their grade level. But they may not be aligned with what was actually taught during that quarter, for example, or during that, um, and, and as a part of the first part of that year. There are other assessments that are already embedded within the curriculum that we're actually using that might give us, in some cases, better data to understand whether students are responding to our instruction in the ways that we want. And for science, that would also be, um, more, um, more likely to be the case because we don't have a IXL for science that we use. And then for high school, um, quite frankly, IXL has not been, um, a very valid measure. Some students, because they don't perceive that it's related to their grades in the course, they may not take it as seriously as they would otherwise. It can provide useful data, but only in as much as the students try and to demonstrate what they know. We're making an attempt to try to persuade them that it's useful for that purpose this year, but also looking both, um, with English Language Arts and Math, at other assessments that might be more useful for that purpose.
Okay. Will you be able to provide us with information if you pick a new tool or, um, or exploring new tools to use? I know that IXL and I Ready are the sort of, the, the popular ones, the it ones, like all the districts are using them, sort of thing. But I agree with you that I don't necessarily know that they're always the right thing. So I'd be interested to see what other things you come across that might seem to hit the mark better. I know students are also involved with the, with Delta Math, but I don't think that tests in the same way. So, um, and I'm actually really interested to see how we can get some benchmarks for science because it's not taught in this, as, in the same way with the same functionality. So, um, I, I hope you'll share that with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just most of the, the end dates on your goals and, um, it says no later than June thirtieth. And I was just wondering if they could be backed up a couple of weeks because usually we would do your review, um, of your goals in mid-June. So I don't know if there's any rumor, would we be meeting in July?
Sue. That's a good question, Ms. Batafora. Um, so the, 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 I mean, I'll certainly look through and be willing to make those adjustments. I think some of them that are June thirtieth in particular relate to the summit evaluations for our staff that are due by the end of the, of the school year, being June thirtieth. How, I, I mean, it's by that date that all of them should be done. But as far as others, where it, where it references June,
Yeah.
that should be read to mean the June school committee meeting.
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Batafora. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. All right, the vice chair just told me we need to, uh, take action here. So is there a motion to? Ms. Macklin to accept, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Any final questions, everyone? Hearing none?
Mr. Jemmy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Hordy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Come on, just once, Mr. Gray. Do it.
He's speaking because it's lighting up. We just can't.
Yeah, so the lighting up means yes.
Ms. Rose Eiberg? Mayor Christensen?
Yes. All right, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Superintendent. Now over to Ms. Hordy to talk about how things are going with the SHOR collaborative.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a quick update about, uh, the SHOR collaborative. Uh, I serve on the, the board there as the representative for Malden Public Schools. They, at this point, have their highest number of students enrolled there, two hundred and ten this past school year, which they're very excited for. Uh, they also have a new partnership with the Four Kids Only After-School Program, which is a nice opportunity for their students there. They had limited after-school opportunities, period, whether it be a program or even different extra curriculars that they've begun adding. So that's a nice addition to that as well. Um, other than that, their, their staff has been, they have a group of staff that have become, um, certified interpreters and other things like that happening. So we are, we are glad that they are doing well and are, continue to have a, a positive, uh, relationship with our school district as well. Thank you.
And Ms. Hordy, just to clarify, the two hundred and ten, that's across?
From all the communities that they were with.
How many participating communities? A dozen or half dozen?
Yes, I would say about twelve-ish.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions of Ms. Hordy? Thank you, Ms. Hordy. Hearing none. Let's go to Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so just a quick update, um, just because the Budget Subcommittee normally doesn't meet this early in the year, but because of, um, some discussions at the city level, um, we thought it would be good to pull us all together to talk about, um, what, uh, a proposition two and a half discussion looks like for the city, as well as, um, a, a look at our to, year-to-date, um, financials, what we're, what we have spent, our averages for Q one. And just a quick overview on warrants, just because they have kind of a little bit newer um, to being on the agenda. So, um, we were joined by Mr. Ro, uh, Mr. Hogan,
Yep.
who came and, um, talked a bit about just the implications of, um, and impact of what, uh, Prop two and a half on the city side would do for us. Um, again, that conversation always turns to Chapter Seventy funding and how that is really the biggest impactor to funding for, um, the schools as well as, um, as, to the city and, and residents. Right now, we are on track with our Q one financials. Um, so I have asked that, going forward, we meet, um, quarterly. We'll come back together in January to look at, uh, Q two and just look at, you know, any trends if we see that we are, our spending is higher, maybe on curriculum or, um, or maybe there are some savings. In years past, we have seen, I don't want to call it savings, but because we haven't filled all of our, um, staffing. And this year is the first year that we've been fully staffed. So we're not necessarily seeing those saves on the salary side.
Right.
Um, so good, um, because we have teachers in front of our classrooms. Bad, in the sense of any money you've had.
Yeah.
Um, exactly, so. So that's about it. We'll come back together in January and just keep plugging away and, um, and keep calling our, our state legislators to get us more money.
Questions of the chair? And for those that are here or might be watching, we would encourage you all to visit cityofmalden.org/override. That is sort of a repository of where all the information is regarding uh, where we are and where we're going. Uh, now, Ms. Rose Eiberg, draft policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, actually, I'm going to do the Subcommittee Report, and then we'll do that later, right?
Sure.
Yep. Um, so we met, um, in October, and part of what we talked about was creating this, the policy you just referred to, which will be IHAIA, the Middle School Pathway Exploration. We've talked about this before here, but just to reiterate, it's a policy that required by state regulations to have in place to ensure all middle school students are informed of and gain exposure to career technical education programs. Uh, we were fortunate that we already had much in place. Thank you to the, um, Central Office for working on that. That was voted, um, unanimously to come to full council, which will be the motion that, um, I'll make later on. Um, we also did discuss, um, there was a request made for dedicating the Ferryway Cafeteria, which was, um, you did it right, you found some, some background information on that. It actually had already been cleared to be dedicated to, um, Paula Bear. Um, so I've relayed that to the school. Um, they actually now are looking at potentially, um, wanted to name a field after them, but then that would end up switching out of our purview and turns to the city purview. So that will be on them, so we cleared that. The majority of the meeting, um, really was on competent, competency determination. Assistant Superintendent Basine did a wonderful presentation for us. Um, as we all know, we have to come up with new reg, new ways to assess competency, um, with the changes made with MCAS. Turning it over to Dr. Sipple to go over, he's got different slides and things to go over that were presented, um, and will help us, um, people to get the idea of what we're working with and the different approaches that can be done for this. We have to have something in place by the end of the calendar year.
Okay, very good. Any questions of Ms. Rose Eiberg? If not, do you want anything, Sue?
Yeah, it's the same slides you were on.
While she's doing that, are we voting this?
No.
No.
Okay. This is just informational for tonight.
Okay.
But we, uh, you got it? Hey, all right. Um, so, thank you, uh, Member Rose Eiberg. Um, the, uh, the essential, we just wanted to, um, just share some of this update because we do anticipate, um, hopefully, uh, proving a policy, um, in December. The competency determination is, um, the reason we're doing this is because of, of question two from last year. And the State Board of Education made, uh, a new policy last spring that requires districts to consider mastery and not just course passage as a part of their competency determination for graduation. And, um, the way that can be done, if you can go to the next two slides in. That mastery could be demonstrated via a final assessment for the, a course. It could be done via a capstone or portfolio project or an equivalent measure. And just going to very briefly just share with you that in addition to meeting with the, uh, Subcommittee last month, if you go to the next slide, we did, we have been meeting with stakeholders. Um, we have our, uh, caregivers, um, by, through a survey, um, that overwhelmingly, I would say, um, preferred a final assessment for a course as opposed to a portfolio project as a way to, for students to demonstrate mastery. Our educators, we've also been surveying, um, the majority for English Language Arts actually preferred a portfolio or a capstone project. Um, for math, the majority favored final exam. And then for science and history, there wasn't even split. Um, for two thousand twenty-seven going forward, we do need to have a, uh, a measure of mastery for U.S. history in addition to science, ELA, and math. For the next slide, we also talked with our District Advisory Groups. Our school councils had their orientation in October, early October. These questions that we asked them were about what approach we should take in making this change because, um, we don't necessarily have to do everything at once. We could phase in these changes so that our juniors, like our student representative, or our seniors, like our alternate, um, uh, representative, are not having the goalposts shift on them in the middle of their junior and senior year. And the changes, the more significant changes would take place for classes in the future. For example, our current eighth graders, which you'll see in a moment. So the school council strongly preferred stability and, um, in messaging and phasing things in. Our English Learner Parent Advisory Committee, uh, also preferred a phase-in approach. Uh, we still have consultation, uh, continuing, and we're looking forward to, um, connecting with CPAC, our Student Advisory Committee, as well as our District PTO and other groups. All right. So the discussion of the phase-in approach I just mentioned, um, our proposal, one proposal is to utilize course passing, the current policy as the CD, the competency determination for current high school students, but then shift to, uh, an assessment for that mastery demonstration for current eighth-grade students and then, uh, other classes following. And that would allow students to know what the competency determination requirements are before they begin to take a course and not shift the requirements for them upstream. And would also allow us to test out different assignments and, uh, assessments, rather, and develop these, pilot them, and make sure they're accessible to students with disabilities and our multilingual learners as well. And so the last piece I'll just share with you, kind of where we are right now, is a proposed timeline that this December, we would have a policy, hopefully approved by the school committee, and submitted to DESI. And we begin communicating to students and families what the new policy is. By next May, assessments for each course would be developed with educator input and presented, um, by me to you. And again, communicating to students and families the new policy prior to enrollment in courses for next year. And then for June twenty-seven, the assessments developed and piloted for each course for, uh, the class of twenty-nine. And that, that course would be passing for all students. Sophomores, a class of twenty-nine, would take the pilot exams, but they would not be held to that standard for the purpose of, of graduation. And then between, uh, twenty-seven school year and the tw- two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, we would be scoring those assessments, reviewing them, making adjustments to them so that the sophomore class of, of twenty-twenty-nine, those families would know what their, what, what to expect before they, before they start school that year. But then the, uh, assessments to actually determine course passing would be for the class of twenty-thirty. And again, that would be for, for juniors and seniors in the class of, the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. Juniors and seniors would still have the current policy of course passing for those three, for those, those courses, including U.S. history. But, uh, the assessment requirement would begin for the sophomores, um, for the class of twenty-thirty. I know it's a lot, but I just wanted to share just, uh, we're trying to respond to the concerns of educators, of stakeholders, and also making sure that what we're doing is fair, um, to our students. And so with that, I think that's the update, Ms. Rose Eiberg.
Anything else you want to add, Ms. Rose Eiberg? Anything else you want to add, Ms. Rose Seiberg? If not, why don't we take up this draft policy you have down in motions or resolutions?
Sure.
If there's no objections, we'll take that out of order. Chair has none. Do you want to make the motion?
Sure, I have a motion to adopt the policy IHAIA, Middle School Pathway Exploration policy.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Any final questions, everyone? What was the vote of the committee? That was unanimous?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do you have a question, Ms. Hordy? Stand by. Go right ahead.
I had a question about the competency determination. Is, are we not, are we skipping that?
Yes, we're taking that up in December.
So, so no questions until December?
Well, there's no vote tonight.
Okay, all right.
If you want to ask a question, go right ahead.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
I guess I'll wait.
Please, Ms. Batafora.
Thank you. Ms. Rose Seiberg, do we have to suspend docket rules because this hasn't come before us and you're asking us to vote on it tonight?
This had been, thank you, we could. This had actually been presented to us to look at and then got sent to me last month. So that could potentially be the one month. But if we want to be extra careful, we can ask to suspend docket.
Here's the chair policy, I'll leave it up to you.
I think we're, I think we're okay, but it's up to you both.
So I was good to be safe. Which is asking, do you have to post? There's a certain way to post things, and so I thought that we break within that. As you can tell, I have a cold, I'm a little fuzzy. So we want to be super safe. I would make a motion to suspend the rule and let us vote on this tonight.
Seconded by Mr. Bernard. Madam Clerk, you have all that? So this is just to suspend the docket rules to get this properly before us. Let's call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Hordy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Give us some thumbs up.
Mr. Bernard?
That was a yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rose Seiberg?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes, so that carries. So now the docket rules are suspended. You have the motion and the second for the policy itself. Let's call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Hordy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray? Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Seiberg?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes, that carries unanimously. Okay, good work. Now let's take a look at this donation. Over to Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as I, I'm going to actually read the, the card that this came with. But this is a $500 donation to the Malden High School Coral Arts Society. And if you have not ever heard their voices, you need to pay attention, especially this year during the holidays, because they are absolutely amazing and they deserve every penny that this, that's coming to them. And this is coming from Kate, Jim, and St. John's Parish, and overall, the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Boston. So, very generous donation. Very grateful to accept this on behalf of the Malden High School Coral Arts Society.
Motion made.
Motion to accept.
Motion made by Ms. Batafora, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Any questions, everyone? Let's call the roll.
Mr. Drummy? Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Hordy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray? Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Seiberg? Mayor Christensen?
Yes, that carries unanimously. All right, everyone, let's stay with Ms. Batafora for the audit of Special Education Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for, I don't know, approximately two weeks, I've been popping into some classrooms throughout the district. Right now, we just wrapped up, and I've been touring with the superintendent and our assistant superintendent of Student Services, Pam McDonald, as well as our team chairs, and looking at our intensive learning programs. I'm heading into the Early Learning Center next week. But really, what has driven me to dive deeper into Special Education Services is some concern from educators as well as concern from parents. And there's a few bullet points I want to touch upon. One being just the services that are on students' IEPs. So you have your service grid, and that's what we legally have to provide services to that student. So ensuring that what is on that grid is being followed. There is also some concern surrounding classroom or sizes, or the amount of students receiving Special Education Services. How many educators are supposed to be in that classroom? I will say, a personal concern, just because I am a special ed parent, was the amount of educators servicing students on IEPs that are working on waivers that don't necessarily have a background in special education. So with all of that combined, we did have a, so DESI does audit us. I do want to say that every three years, there's a three-year cycle in which DESI comes in and audits us. The last one was done in May of 2024, and that was an integrated monitoring review. They review for different standards, and the last standards that were addressed were licensure and professional development, parent slash student slash community engagement, oversight, time and learning. What they haven't taken a look at, and what I am really focusing on or hoping that this committee focuses on, is IEP development, the programming, and licensure and professional development. So, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion, I have a more formal motion on how that would read, that the Malden Public School District conduct a comprehensive audit of its Special Education Services, and the purpose of this audit would be to evaluate the delivery, consistency, and effectiveness of services provided to students with disabilities. As outlined in their IEPs, the audit should include a review of service grids, staffing levels, compliance with state and federal regulations, and collaboration practices between educators, service providers, and families. Findings and recommendations of this audit should be presented to the school committee no later than the April 6, 2026, meeting. That date I chose to put forth because I think a lot of this should be done so we can be prepared for hiring next year. So whatever findings come out, we can make sure that we are implementing those.
Is that Joe Gray?
That's, that's my grandchild. Probably calling for her nightly, "Good night." So that date would be so we could implement any hiring that we may come across findings that we are lacking.
Motion made, seconded by Ms. Macklin. And no cost of this audit.
This would be an internal audit right now, but I would advise the district that if, as we dig, if we're finding larger issues, that we would potentially bring in a consultant to rectify those, especially because we do have a DESI audit that will be happening '26, '27. So I think this is a good precursor to that, to dig deep and correct anything before DESI gets their eyes on us, so to say.
Okay. And just a question, I don't know if you can answer, maybe the superintendent. When DESI does come in, is it just random on what standards they choose?
So the next scheduled should be what's known as a Group A universal standards, and that would address student identification, so identifying students that require services, the IEP development, the programming, and also equal opportunity. The last time that was done was in 2021. So every three years, they bounce between this Group A and Group B standards.
Okay. All right, there you have it, everyone. Any questions of the sponsor? Let me take up Ms. Hordy first, Sue, and then I'll come back to you.
Thank you. Question, who's going to do the audit?
So, back in 2021, former school committee member Michelle Luong had requested an audit, and it was done by our Special Education Office, in which they reached out to caregivers to confirm that the services that were on the IEP were in fact being delivered. So the expectation would be those that are in the position would be conducting the audit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hordy. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, two things. I wanted to just say, first of all, that I, as I was developing my goals, and we talked about a Special Education Review, I did not know that this motion was coming forward. But I really see that they complement each other very well. And so I think that the spirit of the goal that you all approved for me tonight, as far as a Special Education Review, is very consistent with the audit as well. And I think the audit could help inform both what program adjustments we want to make for next year, but also the longer-term strategic planning for special education. And I think we may need to look at outside support, depending on, because we want to make sure that our energies are going, first and foremost, to delivering the services, and then, but then also making sure that, that we, that everything is going as it's, as it's supposed to be.
Thank you. Superintendent? So the motion's been made, it's been seconded. Any other questions? Let's do it.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Hordy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray? Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Seiberg? Mayor Christensen?
Yes, that carries unanimously. All right, everyone, we're now down to personal privilege, left to right. Let's do it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This Thursday, they're having a Candy Bar Bingo at the Ferryway. Starts at 5:30. First card is free, second, no, first card, yeah. First card is a dollar, second card after that is $2. It's a good fundraiser for the PTO. On Monday, the 17th, the Ferryway PTO is hosting the district-wide PTO at the Ferryway School at 6:00 PM. Thursday, November 20th, Parent Teacher Conference, goes from 6:00 to 7:30. You need to make an appointment with your child's teacher ahead of time, so don't delay. And on December 1st through the 5th, they will be doing their holiday shopping that they usually do for students that want to get something for their parents, siblings, family members, or whatever. And because it's happening, there's no school the 26th, 27th, and 28th because it's Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Drummy. Over to Mr. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Should be brief. On Tuesday, November 18th, for the Salem Wood, there's parent-teacher conferences from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Interested to the K-4 office. Come and meet with your teachers to see how your child is doing. And again, from the 26th to the 28th, there is no school because of Thanksgiving, so enjoy whatever meal you share with your families. It's one of my favorite holidays, simply for that. And I'll just go and put a shout out that if anyone needs it, there's a turkey dinner that generally happens at the high school. And if you want to go and help volunteer for that, reach out to Bread of Life, right?
Yes.
All right. And then finally, well, on December 7th, there's a craft fair at the Salem Wood Gym. That's on December 7th. If you need to go and, if you want to go and sign up to offer a table, reach out to the Salem Wood FTO for more information. And finally, just because tomorrow is Veterans Day, and I'm unfortunately unable to go and attend the thing, I just wanted to go and, and put a personal remembrance out to all my family members that have gone and served. I've got my cousin Matt, my niece Jordan, my nephew. They've all gone and, they've all gone and served, and it's a good day to go and honor them and just make sure that we go and thank them for putting forth their bodies, you know, in service of the country.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Ms. Rose Seiberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the Linden, we have on November 14th, the student craft fair applications are due. That's if students want to participate in that, the one that is on the 7th, that the craft fair that's going to be at the Salem Wood School, which is actually a combination of ELC Linden and Salem Wood. So if students want to have a booth, have a table there, the application's due November 14th. November 15th, 7th grade nature's classroom permission slips and deposits are due. November 21st is the Spirit We Are Order deadlines. I checked them out, there's some really cute new designs to check out for that. The craft fair, as we just said, on December 7th. December 8th through December 12th will be a holiday shop. Volunteers are needed for that, and signups will be coming soon. And December 15th through December 19th is a Candy Cane Grams, and that's a Model UN fundraiser. They keep doing great things so that they can keep competing. December 16th, Winter Holiday Laser Show will be given to all grades. December 17th, there's a PTO Paint Night, and that's a 7th grade fundraiser. That one, I asked a little bit more about that one. It's going to be 6 to 8 at Linden School. It's actually the art teacher who's there. $20 per person, and there'd be snacks and refreshments available to purchase. And be looking forward to, again, what they'll be doing in January, date to be decided, the stuffy sleepover that they've done before, where kids bring their stuffed animals and leave them overnight and find out what they do while they're left alone. Again, just adding to, Mr. Bernard, I want to thank all of the veterans. I've got a lot of my family as well, and to anybody who has served, my great appreciation for that, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you. Over to Ms. Macklin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And from Mr. Rock at the ELC, he says, "The ELC PTO kicked things off beautifully with the Fall Festival, full of laughter games and community spirit. A heartfelt thank you to all of the families and volunteers who helped make this special evening possible." And he's looking forward to many more events throughout the year and hope everyone can join in the fun. As my colleagues have said, no school tomorrow for Veterans Day, Thanksgiving break, November 26th through the 28th, and December 4th and 5th are Make-up Picture Day. Another happening at the ELC on November 13th and 14th. Malden Reads will bring in interactive storytelling of the story of Ruby Bridges to the ELC classrooms. Volunteers will guide students through a three-part retelling, helping children reflect on courage, fairness, and kindness. And then I have from our high school, report cards will be going out on Wednesday. Conferences are held Thursday, November 13th, and the play production presentation of Percy Jackson and the Lightning Thief is coming up on November 21st and 22nd. Malden versus Medford. That's the Thanksgiving Day football game. It's going to be over at the Hormel Stadium in Medford at 10:00 AM. So, go Malden.
All right, thank you, and Ms. Hordy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. From Forestale and Mr. Weldy, the November PTO meeting will be this Wednesday, November 12th at 6:00 PM on Google Meet. Please check the PTO Facebook page for the meeting links. Friday, November 21st, from 5:30 to 7:30, is the annual Fall Festival. Come and support the amazing 6th and 7th graders as they raise money for trips and events throughout the year with some fun and memorable games and events for families. I strongly encourage you to go. A lot of the students make their own games, and it's very, very fun to play. The Forestale School is currently running a food drive to benefit the Bread of Life. Anyone who would like to bring in items to be donated can do so between now and November 21st. The office is able to accept monetary donations as well. And Friday, December 5th, from 5:30 to 7:30, will be the annual gingerbread event and craft fair. Come have fun decorating gingerbread with the family and visit the craft fair, which is open to the public so you can purchase some holiday goods. As many of my colleagues have said, happy Veterans Day tomorrow to all who have served. They deserve a day, at the bare minimum. And happy Thanksgiving to all.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hordy. Ms. Batafora?
Thank you. Actually, Ms. Hordy, what was the gingerbread date?
Thank you. Actually, Ms. Hordy, what was the gingerbread date?
5th, Friday the 5th.
Okay. Thank you. Out of BB. So, November 12th, 2:30 to 3:30 in the BB Small Gym, we will, or BB will be hosting the Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, where students will be escorted, well, they must be escorted to this event by caregiver or guardian. There'll be activities, art projects, and learning about who Ruby Bridges was, and how her bravery and courage changed the course of education for people of color. This is a huge thanks to Malden Reads, Malden Safe Streets, and our own Malden High School students. To Malden High School, love for-
Kids.
Kids, thank you. Report cards go home on November 12th. On November 13th, the Malden Police Department will host a safety presentation to our students. November 18th is caregiver night, and November, ooh, I jumped around. November 11th, grade 8 visits Malden High School, very exciting. And from November 3rd until November 30th, BB is hosting a canned food drive, so please send along non-perishable foods that can be dropped off in the main lobby. And again, no school four days this month, and a thank you to my own daughter who is serving her country. She is not a veteran, because she is actively serving, but still deserves all the praise.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When it comes to Malden Athletics, the Golden Tornado Club Athletic Hall of Fame will be held on November 22nd at the Malden Moose Hall, and tickets are available at the MHS Athletic Office. I don't know what the price is, but Mr. Conover probably knows.
Or- Mr. Freckle does.
How much are they, Freckle? Do you know?
$50.
$50.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, everyone, now, let's see if we want to go into executive session. Motion, ha, I shouldn't have put it that way. Motion by Ms. Batafora, seconded by Mr. Bernard. Let's call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Hordy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray? Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Eiberg? Mayor Christensen.
Yes. All right, that carries unanimously. We're now in executive session. I think so. All right, everybody, we're back. All right, everybody, we're back. We'll now entertain any motions from the committee. Ms. Batafora?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept the MOA for SEIU Local 888 Cafeteria Workers effective July 1st for three years and authorize the chair to sign.
Seconded by Mr. Drummy. Any questions? Any last-minute questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoody?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Roseiberg?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes, that carries unanimously. Now, the all-important question on who wants to make a motion to adjourn, uh, motion by Mr. Drummy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoody?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Roseiberg?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes, that carries unanimously. Now, the all-important question on who wants to make a motion to adjourn, uh, motion by Mr. Drummy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoody?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Roseiberg?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Did you see the evil eye he got from everyone? Yes.
He was already adjourned.
School committee is hereby adjourned.